Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of June 20th, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to have all of you here engaging in the civic process, and we appreciate your participation. Tonight, we want to remember a very, very special woman, the first female mayor of our wonderful city, and we lost her recently, Mary Kay Shell, former mayor and also former 5th District County Supervisor. Mary Kay was a trailblazer. What I remember about her is that she tirelessly devoted herself to making our community a better place, not for some people, but for all people. She cared really deeply. She gave generously of her time. She served zealously, and she valued every individual. And in so doing, she attended to people with utmost mindfulness. You knew that you were the focus of her attention. Just such a trailblazer for all of us, exemplary role model, and we're going to miss her very, very much. I had the pleasure tonight of actually opening our meeting with her gavel, and what an honor it is to do that. She said to me when I was transitioning into office, this was her advice, "Serve the people." So may we all be those servants one to another in caring for one another and caring for our community. And at this time, would you join me in a moment of silence in remembering Mary Kay Thank you. And for those of you who would like to attend her service there tomorrow, rosary at 10:00 at St. Francis, followed by a mass at 10:30 also at St. Francis. At this time, Pastor Mike Ostheimer, pastor of Calvary Chapel Bakersfield, is going to offer the invocation. Pastor Mike is very, very active in our community. His church is engaged in serving. We really appreciate all that you do, Pastor Mike. And then, following the invocation, Gabrielle Wery, a recent graduate of Centennial High School, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. She is a superstar. So Gabby is a 4.5 First in Class recipient. She's a member of the National Honor Society and the very highly competitive CS, We the People Team from Centennial High School. You win very often, don't you? Avid swimmer, varsity swim captain, ASB Senior Class Representative, avid community volunteer, and she mentors freshman connection link crew, and she will attend UC Berkeley, majoring in Architecture. So we are so honored to have you here and to celebrate your wonderful accomplishments. So at this time, Pastor Mike, would you come and lead us, please? Would you all please stand?
Father God, we come before you tonight, and Lord, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather, or as a community, or to address the needs of our city. Your word tells us that, Lord, we are...
To offer all supplication and prayers and intercessions and giving thanks to be made for all of men, and yet, as well, you tell us to pray for those that serve in leadership, as your word tells us that, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by Him." And so, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for our mayor. Thank you for Karen. Thank you for the City Council, Lord, who serve so tirelessly, sometimes without much thanks. We pray, as your word says, to let them not grow weary in doing good, for in due time they'll reap, Lord, and we thank you, Lord. We pray that you would give them strength, Lord, and give them wisdom, Lord, as they make decisions about our community. Lord, to know that the issues tonight before us and the need of greater revenue, we pray that, Lord, that you would provide the needs for a wonderful, growing city in which we live. We pray that, Lord, you would take this night and all the things that would transpire, and you would glorify your name in and through it. Lord, we thank you for our city. We thank you for the location at which you placed us and the way that, Lord, through agriculture and oil and commerce, that, Lord, we don't only provide for ourselves, but we have the privilege, Lord, of meeting needs throughout the world. And, Lord, we thank you for the responsibility that comes with that, and what a privilege it is. And so, Lord, tonight, we pray that, again, the decisions that would be rendered here would be good for all the people of our community. We thank you for the many blessings, Lord, and we do pray, Lord, for the family of Mary Kay Shell, and we pray your peace and your comfort would be theirs during this difficult time. And, Lord, we do thank you for her life and, Lord, just the impact that she made and the legacy that she leaves. And so, Lord, we just, with a spirit of gratitude and thanksgiving tonight, we just give you all the praise and the glory as we pray in the wonderful name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Mike. And now Gabby, representing Centennial High School.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn your phones off, and in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed at other times of the meeting for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to other signs aren't allowed in the council chambers. Thank you so much for your cooperation this evening, and we look forward to a great meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, we have certificates of appreciation to the sponsors of the Fourth of July celebration at the Park at Riverwalk, Adventist Health, California Water Company, Rabobank, Robert and Carrie Grimm Family Foundation, and PG&E.
Do you all come up, those of you who are receiving? How privileged we are to live in a country where we are free people and we can celebrate our freedoms. So coming up is a wonderful time on the Fourth of July at Spectrum Amphitheater. It's, for those of you who haven't been, it is a great time, gathering together. The place is packed, starting at 6:00. I think the gates open, and 7:00 music with Menterboro, and at 9:15, the skies light up with wonderful fireworks. In between, there's all kinds of wonderful food to eat, and I think some of us have indulged in past years. So wonderful, wonderful time, but none of that would be possible without our excellent, wonderful sponsors. So we are honored tonight to be able to recognize with these certificate of appreciation given to our outstanding sponsors, Adventist Health, represented by Kiyoshi Tomono, California Water Company, Mike Morris, Rabobank, oh, there you are, Deanna, and Robert and Carrie Grimm Foundation. They're not here tonight, but we thank them also. And then Ms. Kristen Dowd from PG&E, thank you all so much. And then we have our excellent partners from AEG. Thank you so much, Steve and Sam, for being here, and I am delighted to present these certificates of appreciation to each of them in recognition of their wonderful sponsorship of the 2018 Fourth of July Celebration at the Park at Riverwalk, and in recognition of their commitment for providing our residents with a fun and free fireworks show and live entertainment. So Adventist Health, thank you so much. Yoshi. California Water Company, thank you. Rabobank, thank you. And I'll let you receive this for Robert and Carrie Grimm and PG&E. Kristen, thank you. Would any of you like to say anything? You are welcome to say a couple words if you would like.
I'm good.
You're all good? You're all good? Okay, let's turn around and just take a photo together. How about that? And we want to just, how about just right here? We're just together, and she'll take care of us. Thank you, sponsors.
Get over here.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. We'll see you all on the Fourth. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Certificate of Recognition to Jose Valenzuela of Jay's Garden Works on behalf of Debbie Osborne, owner of the River Lakes Home, awarded Yard of the Season, Spring 2018.
Come up here. And do we have a slide presentation? We will need the screen to go down. Thank you. Well, it is so wonderful to celebrate the beauty of our community when people really take time to beautify their yards so that we can all enjoy that. Let's take a look at what's happened up here. So this is the last day of spring. We're celebrating a wonderful yard that was chosen as an Outstanding Yard of the Season. Here's the view from the sidewalk, view from the west side. You can see the lovely greenery there, front entry, and from the east side of the home. But all very lovely, and all of this was designed by you, Jose Valenzuela, and we want to congratulate you for that. This is actually the home of Ms. Debbie Osborne, who was unable to join us tonight, so I want to present this to you in recognition of your exceptional work on the landscape of the River Lakes Home, awarded to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee's Spring 2018 Yard of the Season. Thank you so much for this. And then Ms. Debbie will, she'll get to display this sign, but it wouldn't be possible without you. So we will give this. Ms. Kathy Butler, who's on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, if you would like to come up here and... Please, as is here, and, oh, and scoot over and we'll take a photo. John Arithis, are you here? Anybody else from the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamation to Diane Hoover, Recreation and Parks Director, declaring Recreation and Parks Month in Bakersfield during July 2018.
Where would we be without parks? Where would we be without recreation? Recreating life? Is that what you do for us? I think so. So it is my honor to issue the following proclamation. Whereas recreation programs and parks are essential to communities across America, including the City of Bakersfield, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental in establishing and maintaining our community's quality of life by offering citizens the opportunity to participate in recreation activities for improved health while contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community, increasing property values, expanding the local tax base, growing tourism, attracting and retaining businesses, and reducing crime, and a whole lot of other good things, whereas parks and green spaces remove pollution from the air, lower city temperatures, and aid in capturing and storing water. Now therefore, I, Karen Kago, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim July 2018 as Recreation and Parks Month in our city, and urge all residents to enjoy and recognize the social, physical, mental, economic, environmental, and community benefits derived from our wonderful cities, parks, streetscapes, programs, and partnerships. And it's dated this 20th day of June. Signed, Karen Go. It's my honor. Diane, thank you so much for all of your investment in our community, your love for seeing the quality of life improve. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you, City Council, for supporting Parks and Recreation every day. There's so many things to do. We have 59 parks, and staff put together a whole list of items to do in July, certainly areas to cool off. We have 10 spray parks, four pools, and all the parks and activities that we have. We start off with a Beal Band concert on July 1st, and every Friday night, we have a movie in the park for free. And we have partnered this year with the Astronomy Club, and we're going to have a star party in July at the Park at Riverwalk. So we've got just so many things. This will be on our website. You can check it out at bakersfieldparks.us, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Something for every day, so no bored kids. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Well, let's see, while we were down there, a Boy Scout troop has joined us. Thank you so much for being here. It's always our pleasure to have the Scouts represented. We appreciate all that you do for our community, so thanks for joining us tonight. At this time, we'll receive, yes, let's give them a hand. At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can't, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. If you're here on Hearing Item 10A, that's the Revised Annual Action Plan, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when that item is called later in the meeting. If you have comments on Item 12B, which is the potential tax measure, we're going to hear those later in the meeting when that item is called, and not during public statements. That will give us more time. It seems like a lot of people are very interested in this topic, so that will be coming up later. If you submitted a speaker card for the tax item, we'll call on you when we address Item 12B. And if you didn't submit a speaker card for the tax item, we'll provide an opportunity as time allows. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Mayor Go, we have received three speaker cards this evening, all regarding separate subjects. I also wanted to mention, we have received three additional speaker cards regarding Deferred Business Item 12B, that as you mentioned, those comments will be heard later tonight. Our first public speaker tonight is Frank Sanchez Jr., regarding crime, drugs, and gangs.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen of the honorable City of Bakersfield, California, I am Frank Sanchez Jr., a graduate of Delano High School in Delano, California, punitively discharged, United States military veteran, and summa cum laude business graduate from SJVC in Hanford. I address you all here today with a heavy heart and thus sore, very sore feet from my walk to and fro amidst the streets of this honorable city. My concern is our young children and the path that we are asking them to endure from our works of today and yesterday. I am currently writing a screenplay that will summarize my concern and can only bear fruit if our wonderful mayor decides to approve and therefore participate in. I am asking for one hour of her physical labor presence, which will consist of 30 minutes of choreography and 30 minutes of actual filming. I have a teaser introduction in my possession, and with the collective approval of this audience, will read. It should only take me only two minutes to read this teaser, if allowed. If not, I have also made copies for each dignitary to read at his or her convenience. I have also left my resume for you, Ms. Go, to share with your dignitaries. Everything from my professional history to my educational conquests are in this resume. Please feel free to take time out and chew on these documents, and when you have been sufficiently fed, please feel free to ask me anything relevant to this request of participation in a play that will have a potential for cinematic recognition and a much-needed realistic moral cleansing of this fine and upstanding community. Would you like the...
You can go ahead and give that to our clerk right here, and she'll give copies. Your time is almost up, so there, we have about 36 seconds left. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Next speaker, please.
Curtis Bingham, Senior, Regarding Blessings.
Honorable Mayor, and to the board, I just pray God will keep his hands on you and bless you to keep doing what you're doing. You know, the Lord tells us to honor our leaders, because the Lord don't allow you to go to your own funeral, and He don't let you participate in your own death. So when we come up and say, "Honorable Mayor and the Board," we honoring you right now. The Lord wants you to get your honor where you can see it and hear it. And I also like to say, when we had such a tremendous mayor that just passed away, it's nice to have comfort to come in. So Mayor, you like a comfort to many people, starting with myself, because when you care about the city and you care about things going on, your mayor's gone, you know another one has to come. So thank you for being a mayor of comfort. You make the people feel a little better that we have a mayor standing in there in a positive way. I'd also like to say, you know, we have needs in the city. There's a lot of things that are taking place out there. A lot of people are becoming afraid, and we have law enforcement, the fire department, many other areas that have a need. But there's also a group that we don't see. They would be vice. They work undercover. You don't see them. There's not any amount of money you can give them. They wouldn't need more. They sit in the groups with the people everybody afraid of, trying to bring these people down to protect our kids, protect our homes, and protect the neighborhood. You don't get to see them, you know, but they got their lives extremely on the line. And so I'm just trying to say, there would be a need there. And when we have needs, if we recognize our Bible, what they did, they always had a public issue. And so I'm being real careful because I know what I had, so I'm just scripty. I always went to the people to put things together. And so I just pray we recognize the need that we have. And also, the Fourth of July is coming up. It's a holiday for us, and they also just told us it's fire season. It done got so bad to where when you can't get them to stop, they got their own holiday. It's called fire season now. That's how much we need our fire department. You know, it's just a shame to have that label here in the United States, the fire season, because evil people gonna go out there and screw things up. So I just wanted to say, the needs that we have, law enforcement has to be first, fire department right behind it. You know, we need our district attorney to get the criminals in, because every criminal's running what the district attorney is doing, so we got to keep them in. And I also just like to take this time to thank our city manager. 26 years, a lot of us weren't even around, and we come to this point, and he's keeping it together. And our city attorney, she done saved the city millions of dollars, don't even know how much she done saved the city. So I would just like to say thank you there. And I'd just like to say, let's please remember, those that go out and put their lives on the line for us. I altered my conversation because we weren't allowed to say the sales tax thing, but it's a genius thing to do, to give the people a chance. They used to didn't get a chance to do it. They was forced to do it. We giving them a chance. And also remember, when we go to pay a dollar extra for gas, we pay it. We pay it. The dollar, the gas go put dollar, we pay it. We get $10, we pay $10 more. They do it. So this thing here gives a lot of people a chance to also get a reward from the Lord, whoever willing to help out to make something work, especially law enforcement and other groups. When God calls us in, you get blessed for giving.
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. And pray God bless.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marvin Dean with General Comments.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Marvin Dean. A year ago, I announced that I was going to be running for City Council for the first ward, and I would come up and speak on issues that come before this council from time to time. I haven't been here in a while. I will be on the November ballot along with the sales tax. I'll wait till the sales tax. I was going to speak on that, so I'll wait till that later. And I want to speak on the marijuana initiative is 8C, and I want to talk a little bit about the TRIP program. But before I do any of that, I want to say, we lost two giants in this community, first being Harvey Hall. What can we say? Harvey Hall, we lost him, first mayor. He was a very, very, not only a good mayor, but how he lived his life and the example he set for all of us to follow. And we just lost Mary Shell. I'll be there tomorrow. I was at Harvey Hall's event the other day. One thing that Mayor Shell did was when she got on the Board of Supervisors, not so much over here, but when she became a Board of Supervisor member, she really focused on southeast Bakersfield and the minority community, and she created a Minority Subcommittee to make sure that the county was actually doing business with contracts and jobs with the minority community. And I was her appointee to that committee. So I would just say that, I would just challenge the other public officials here, look at her as an example, and as you do your duty and charge with how you serve, use them as examples. Now, the two things that I'm going to talk about briefly before I sit down, then I'm going to have to come back up, Item 12, is Item C, 8C is talking about the marijuana initiative that this city is opposed to, and I believe, before we start talking about doing any kind of sales taxes, any of those user fees, we try to raise, create more revenues for this city. Because tenably, I don't think the public ought to be looked at paying more fees and taxes and all that if we can raise more, grow our way out, so to speak. Then the last thing, I'm looking at the time there, is that I spoke to roughly, I think, at the meeting when I bumped into your Public Works Director, Nick, I told you I had some concerns about the TRIP program, that some of our members of the Kern Minority Contractors Association had asked me to look at filing a complaint with the state and also the feds on the funds that are coming to this community, that a lot of people feel like the diversity in terms of these contracts, in terms of specifically African-Americans, are not being, are given an opportunity to be included in these projects. So I'm going to get with you. I'm preparing a letter that I told you I was going to do, and I'm going to meet with you privately before we do any such thing as that, because I'm going to try to work it out locally. But there is some concerns, all these highway projects, and there's very few local people and people of color on these projects, so that's a concern. We're going to raise that with you privately before we go publicly. So I'll wait until Item 12, and then come up and talk about the tax initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Next speaker, please.
David Abbasi, Cannabis Initiative.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Council. My name's David Abasi. I'm here on behalf of the Central Valley Cannabis Association and the Central Valley Citizens for Responsible Government. Today, I'd like to speak in regards to the cannabis initiative that qualified for the ballot for this November. The county and the city were working together to close down dispensaries in order to allow only a few that had preference to be able to get licenses here in this area. Virginia Gennaro, the city attorney, had mentioned something about selective enforcement and going after those that were of a more of a concern. In any case, I've worked very hard on that initiative. I worked very hard to qualify it, to coordinate the signature gathering, invested a lot of my time, effort, and money, because I also had owned and operated a dispensary in the city of Bakersfield. I wanted to ask, why did Richard Iger, Ms. Gennaro, why did Richard Iger ask us to rescind the initiative for, in order to work with the city on a more restrictive ordinance that allowed a few, only a few, to get licenses?
Mr. Abasi, this is not the appropriate...
We can't ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's one of the questions I have. Why did he ask us to rescind the measure? I also recall that Ms. Gennaro said that you could not rescind the measure, but I have some documents here. Election Code ninety-six oh four subsection D says you can rescind the measure, actually. It seems that the city and the county have a history, their counsel, legal counsel, has a history of misrepresenting or misleading people when it comes to the cannabis issue and the laws regarding, revolving around those cannabis issues. But, you know, we do our fact-checking here. The city was working with Phil Gannon. We were under threat that if this initiative wasn't the way it was written, that you would not allow it. We were under that premise. That's why we actually didn't agree to a lot of it. We thought it needed more restrictions. It's not perfect, like this seven-and-a-half percent tax, but it's what we got. We didn't know. It was just a leverage tool that was being used by Mr. Gannon because he had his own dispensary in the city limits and that he was trying to control the market here. Also recently, Supervisor Perez at a public meeting said how she was embarrassed, saddened that they as a body have not found a more productive way to work through the issues that does not involve incredible, unreasonable, and despicable influence on this body by special interests. She goes on to apologize and asks that Mr. Maggard also recuse himself in an admission, public admission, that they allowed special interest cannabis groups to influence their decisions here. And, you know, they came after us in the city. They didn't recognize our legal status and we don't want that to happen. We'll also be submitting a pro piece for that initiative with the city clerk. I have some copies for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Abasi.
Interesting stuff to read.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items eight A through eight AE for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item eight C, transmitting an exhibit for the medicinal cannabis initiative resolution, and an additional staff memorandum has been received regarding item eight U, correcting a typographical error on the administrative report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have asked all the council members and nobody wants to take anything off of the consent calendar, so with that, I will make a motion to approve items eight A through AE with the staff changes to those two items.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved.
Next item, please.
Hearings.
Our next item is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed fifteen minutes. It's fifteen minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me which indicates fifteen minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After fourteen minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of fifteen minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up and quickly end your statement then. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict fifteen-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Revised annual action plan. Budget number one, budget and finance committee report regarding the submission of the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen annual action plan, including the community development block grant, three million six hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four, home investment partnerships, one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-nine, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, four hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty, and emergency solutions grant, two hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and eighty programs. And item number two, amendment number three to resolution one five-two dash oh one, establishing council policy for evaluating requests for financial assistance from nonprofit groups.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, may I please have the presentation? I do have a very brief presentation for your council this evening. This item will look very familiar to you as your council has already taken action on this item. As a brief reminder, this is our annual allocation of federally allocated money that the city receives from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Each year, we go through a process where we take these funding sources and we accept applications on the sources and we review those applications for consistency with the federal HUD mission and with our city consolidated plan. Then staff makes a recommendation to the city council budget and finance committee and that recommendation is then presented to the full council for review and approval. So we already went through that process this year pursuant to our normal schedule and your council approved the draft action plan on April eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. However, on May first, just after that approval, we received a bit of a surprise from the federal government and they announced the official allocation and there were some increases in funding and those are shown here. Upon receipt of that official notification, staff was advised that the city would be receiving approximately a million dollars extra in federal funding for these programs. A memorandum was sent out to your council through the city manager's general information, which announced that these additional funds would be distributed between several additional curb gutter and sidewalk projects and they would also be allocated for homeless outreach activities. Those specific allocations are shown in a little more detail here and is in the admin report that was provided to your city council. All of the items in blue are the items that were previously approved by council. The items shown highlighted in orange are the two new items, I'm sorry, three new items that were put into the program. There is still a deadline before us. We must submit the revised action plan to HUD by the end of this month, which is why it's on the council agenda this evening. For the other three programs, the additional funds were dispersed evenly between the programs. No major changes there. And this map shows all of the previously approved projects plus the two new curb gutter and sidewalk projects and flood ministries, which is the expected recipient of the homeless outreach funding. So the action item for your council tonight is to approve the revised action plan and authorize the city manager to submit it to the federal government for review and approval and to also approve an amendment number three to resolution one five-two zero one, which will allow the city council to allocate funding to a nonprofit group for the homeless outreach. With that, I am here to answer any questions, as is Hayward Cox, the Community Development Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Councilmember Gonzalez. Yes, so after the hearing, yes. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor and support of staff's
My name is Marvin Dean again. I hadn't planned on speaking on this, but after I looked at item B, I thought I would come and make a brief remark. But I wanted to say in general, I've watched that community development department for over thirty years in terms of the different people that have come in there and ran that program and how they choose pet projects over and fund projects. But I want to say that under Jackie, your leadership, and Hayward Cox, you guys are doing a tremendous job down there in terms of fairness and no biases and everybody got the same shot at coming in there. I have to commend you guys publicly for that because I've noticed that and it's not always been that way. So I want to say that. But the item, I want to talk about item number two, and I think this is good, but I haven't even read the staff policy, but she's talking about amending the establishment of a policy for nonprofits. Because there's been, there had been a policy where some nonprofits in the past were funded and then there was like some were funded. So I think there ought to be, whatever the policy, it ought to be stated out there for any nonprofit that want to do business or come in and get funding from the city, community development funds, that it's out there for everybody and it's clear and it's balanced so there's no favoritism, how those, what nonprofits get funding and what doesn't. And I'm sure if I read through this, it would be balanced. So I just thought I'd say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor and support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief comment and thank Ms. Kitchen and your team, Mr. Cox, and thank the city manager's office for their work on this item, in particular for hearing my request and that of the council to add additional funding for homeless outreach. We know that homelessness is on the rise and that it's a major concern for many people throughout the city. And so this investment is a drop in the bucket. Certainly, we need additional resources, but it's a very dry bucket and we need to, we need to fund this and I want to thank the staff and the entire team for making this happen. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I will move staff's recommendation on this item.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under deferred business, item A, fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen budget. Number one, resolution approving and adopting the operating and capital improvement budgets for the city of Bakersfield, California for the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. And number two, resolution establishing the city of Bakersfield appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Chris Hewitt, City Manager's Office. This item is, two items associated with the approval of the budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, which is scheduled to start on July one of this year. There are a few changes that staff is recommending to what you saw in the proposed budget on May ninth, and I'd just like to briefly walk through those and then get to our recommendation. The first item is in relationship to a contractual obligation that the city has to actually relocate and construct a permanent storm drain facility on Newton Drive. And so this item was brought to staff's attention after the proposed budget was completed. So staff is proposing a three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar addition to the capital improvement budget to add that project, again, contractually obligated. The city is, has, had previously agreed to do this. That would be funded out of the sewer fund. There is another item in relationship to an action that the state did not take. The Board of Equalization did not make a change to the old gas tax I'm referring it to, where they did not adjust a rate. And therefore, the city is going to receive approximately, is projected to receive approximately one million dollars less in gas tax revenue because that change was not made. And so staff is proposing a reduction in one of the TRIP projects, the Centennial Corridor Connector ramps project. Although we're proposing a reduction because staff was very successful in receiving several federal and state grants, there's not gonna be any overall change to the project timeline or schedule or funding for that project, but we are not anticipating receiving this million dollars, so we do need to make that change. The next two items are related to the general fund. The first is the appropriation of the firework citation proceeds. That will be the city's contribution to the Fourth of July celebration event. Those did come in at thirty-six thousand dollars, so this is just getting those into the budget. And then the next item is in relationship to the parking garage on Eighteenth and Ice Street. It's staff's recommendation that we increase the amount of security. We went through the parking recommendations and those were adopted by council. And what this will do in part is increase the number or the amount of security that's in the garage each day. And in doing so, we hope to provide a convenient, more safe place for folks to park. Again, as we're changing up some of our policies and programs downtown related to parking, the goal is to increase the use of that facility. So again, this will increase that contract for security and that's forty-five thousand dollars. And then that is it for the proposed changes. And so what we're asking for tonight is a resolution approving and adopting the operating capital budgets for next year, starting July one, two thousand and eighteen, totaling six hundred and forty-eight point six million dollars. And that's comprised of a four hundred and thirty-nine million dollar operating budget and a two hundred and eight point eight million dollar capital improvement budget. We also have a resolution that is establishing the appropriations limit. This is required under state law that the city adopt a appropriations limit. That's done through calculation with information provided by the state of California. So when we crunch that number, the appropriation limit is four hundred and eight point five million dollars. And the city's appropriations and the budget that you're considering, which are subject to that limit, are a hundred and sixty-two point two million dollars. So we're well below that appropriation limit threshold. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, staff is recommending approval of both items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Vice Mayor.
I see no comments, so I will move staff's recommendation with suggested changes on that item.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The second item under deferred business, item twelve B, placement of a local one-cent sales tax, transactions in use, public safety and vital city services measure on the November sixth, twenty eighteen general election ballot for voter consideration. A memorandum has been received identifying the number of retired city employees grouped by age range over the last ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Tandy.
Honorable Mayor and members of city council, at your last regular meeting, you instructed the city attorney and the balance of city staff to prepare documents that would be necessary to adopt in order to place a one-cent sales tax measure on the November ballot. That information is before you. In just a minute, Mr. Hewitt is going to go over a brief presentation outlining what the applicable documents are and then the city attorney and myself, Mr. Hewitt, will be available for questions. Just wanted to note that we've had, I think, twenty-four public presentations on this. It has been a great learning experience for us about the community, how people in the community think, how they react to the information we present, and greatly value what has transpired. I am thinking a couple of them will be here a little bit later as speakers, but I would like to extend thanks to everybody who received us and spent an hour or more of their time listening to what we had to say. With that, Mr. Hewitt.
Good evening once again, Honorable Mayor and city council members. This, before you, in the presentation is the direction that was provided, as Mr. Tandy mentioned during last meeting. Wanted to briefly walk through a proposed timeline, assuming approval of the item tonight. Again, for your background, we are on June twentieth here, assuming, under the assumption these items move forward, there would be a July fifth deadline where arguments were due to the clerk's office, both for and against. July sixteenth would be the date that rebuttals... July 16th would be the date that rebuttals are due against those arguments, again, for and against. You know, when Election Day is in November, on the 6th. And then, again, if approved by the voters at that point in time, as I'll discuss in just a moment, the election results would be certified and the oversight committee appointments would be made. Again, with state law, the measure would not become operative until April of 2019, even though it would be approved in November. So in your packet before you, this is the 75-word ballot language that, if approved, would appear on the ballot in November. I will not go through it word for word, but I will note that it meets all the necessary requirements under election code. It is also compliant with what we call the CBRI, which is an initiative that's circulating right now, that if it appears and approves on the, and approved on the November ballot, would require some of this language be included in here. So that is in there as well as requirements that, of AB 195. So again, this is in your packet. It is slightly modified from what you've seen previously to include some of that language, but again, identifies the specific areas in which the city would propose to use the funding, as well as the amount and various other details that fit within that 75 words. And staff is recommending this be the final language that goes forward. A lot of what has been talked about over the last several months and with several community groups involves oversight, insurance that the funding, if approved by the voters, would go towards the priorities that staff has outlined. And before you and in the documents, you will see several requirements. The measure requires establishment of a nine-member citizens oversight committee. It requires the publishing of an annual report. It requires annual financial audits, and it requires distinct accounting procedures for any revenue generated potentially by this measure. A little bit more about the oversight committee. It is proposed at nine members, must be appointed prior to the operative date. Again, that's April of 2019, so prior to that date. And again, the citizens oversight committee is an important component to this process to ensure that any proceeds associated with this revenue are expended in a manner consistent with the priorities of the ballot measure and those in which city staff has received from both the community survey that was done, as well as the outreach meetings. The committee is also required to review the annual report and audit to confirm once again that investment priorities are being held true. Just briefly about the measure itself, it would be a general measure requiring 50.1% of voter approval to pass. It would add 20 cents to a $20 taxable purchase. Remember groceries, prescription medications, several other examples and categories of goods are exempt from sales tax. Would generate approximately $50 million. All those funds would remain local. Nothing would go to Sacramento. It would be prioritized in three different areas for the city. Maintaining and enhancing public safety is the top priority, addressing the fiscal stability of the city, and addressing the quality of life issues such as homelessness through further outreach, through sheltering, through affordable housing, as well as addressing code enforcement and park and recreation issues to ensure vibrant neighborhoods in the future. So these are the action, these are the action items that are before you this evening. Once again, I'll just briefly walk through them. The first is a resolution calling for the placement of the general tax measure on the November 6 ballot. You will notice attached to that resolution is the exhibit, which is the ordinance that would structure the actual measure itself. And so we are asking to conduct first reading of that ordinance. There's an order, a supplemental ordinance to the voters, directing the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis, and then approve the filing arguments for or against the measure of any combination of up to five council members and the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce. So with that, you've seen this slide previously, but we wanted to, once again, leave you with the fact that we believe there are two paths the city is, can go down. We're really at that fork in the road. And with that, I will defer any further comments to Mr. Tandy prior to questions. Thank you.
Mr. Tandy, anything further?
None at this time. You may want to hear the public comments before you ask questions. That's your decision, but we're available for it at the appropriate time.
Thank you. And now we'll receive public statements on this item. We're conducting this item the way we typically conduct public hearings. So we'll have 15 minutes for those in opposition to staff's recommendation, followed by 15 minutes for those in support. And then that will be followed by five minutes for each side for rebuttal. Madam Clerk, how many speaker cards do you have for those speakers who are speaking in opposition to staff's recommendation?
I have received none.
None. And are there any people in the audience who wish to speak who did not submit a card who would like to speak in opposition? We'll call you forward in just a while. Madam Clerk, how many speaker cards do you have for those who wish to speak in support?
I have three speaker cards.
Okay. And then any in the audience who wish to speak in support who did not submit a speaker card? One, two, three. Okay. All right. So we'll begin now with speakers in opposition of staff's recommendation, and we're allocating 15 minutes for this segment. So Madam Clerk, we did not have any speakers who are speaking in opposition, and we see one gentleman would like to speak in opposition. So you can come forward at this time. Please identify yourself.
My name is Mickey Collins. I'm not in opposition. I just want a little clarification. When you showed the one-cent tax increase, is that one cent, not a typo, that it's one percent? Or is it one penny?
Would we be able to clarify that at this point? Madam City Attorney?
Sir, the practical effect of that is it's one cent on every dollar.
One cent on?
On every dollar. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone?
Also, ma'am, while I'm here, if I may, take one minute, I want to acknowledge Parlier. This guy's about the best city councilman you could ever hope to have. We've had problems out where I live in the southwest, and when somebody calls, he's there, he responds, he returns calls. It's not the, and I got 25 years with the city, so the guy's just a great councilman. I think he should be acknowledged.
Well, we acknowledge him. Thank you so much. Mr. Collins? So now we'll hear from speakers in support of staff's recommendation. We have 15 minutes for this. Madam Clerk, would you please call the speakers who are speaking in support of staff's recommendation?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Anthony Galagasa representing your Bakersfield professional firefighters and President Nick Polis. I'm here today to express the support of your firefighters in allowing this sales tax increase to go to the ballot and grant the people of Bakersfield an opportunity to vote. This vote will display to our city that, once again, their city council is fiscally responsible and truly representing their voice by authorizing this to go to the polls in November. Doing more with less seems to be the common theme with both Fire Department and the Police Department. In that your city Fire Department emergency response incidents have gone up 12% over the last calendar year, proves that we definitely do more with less. And with our staffing below 2008 levels, has only exacerbated the situation all the more. This council, along with city staff, has demonstrated time and time again how financially responsible and prudent you have been with the taxpayers' money. And I believe by allowing this sales tax increase to go to a vote of the people would once again make it vividly clear that you care for and are vigilant about your individual wards and the city as a whole. With an oversight committee and an accounting system in place, as city staff is assured, we'll certainly grant the necessary checks and balances to ease the minds of all who may be concerned as to where their money will be targeted and administered. By permitting a good portion of the monies to maintain and enhance public safety staffing and resources will generate a safer Bakersfield for not only our public safety officers, but for our customers as well. This will permit rapid response times and additional personnel that will save lives and lessen the damage created by fire and other hazards. City council and city staff have in the past proven good stewards of this community's hard-earned dollar. And by allowing the voters of Bakersfield the opportunity to decide what the future of their public safety agencies hold is once again proving your stewardship and care for how the citizens' dollars responsibly dispersed. The sales tax increase would be a definitive, locally-guarded funding stream to cultivate and augment public safety services and grant budgetary assurance to the City of Bakersfield and quality of life concerns. Your Bakersfield City firefighters support allowing the citizens the opportunity to decide on this critical and much-needed sales tax increase. And your firefighters would also like to thank the city council and city staff for their continued transparency and fiscal responsibility that has seen this city through numerous financial difficulties, but remain good stewards of our citizens' resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galagasa. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Go. My name is Troy Hightower and members, the council members. First, I'd like to commend you, Mayor, for recognizing previous mayors, Mary Kay Shell and Harvey Hall. The reason I'm making comments is my interest in economic and community development down and in downtown and around downtown. And I feel that's an area that needs more attention from the city and more investment. And last weekend on TV, I was able to watch city manager, Mr. Tandy, and gave some very encouraging comments about interest in economic development as use of these funds. It's also noted on your chart there that limited economic development is an issue. So what I'm requesting is that the city consider economic development to be either one of these vital city services or one of the priorities, and if it's possible, to put that language in the actual document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Mayor Go, councilmembers, city staff. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Last Thursday, Kern Tax sent the following email to city manager Alan Tandy. Quote, "Kern Tax support the sales tax increase by our agreement that the city continues to work with Kern Tax toward the enhancements outlined in a May 18, 2018 letter to Mayor Go and councilmembers. Kern Tax reviewed this letter with city manager Tandy, councilmember Gonzalez, on May 30 at the city manager's office. Kern Tax sees more significant benefit of transparency and accountability through a strong advisory committee versus the concept of a sunset clause. We also recognize that economic development portion of the plan, the subject of most recent discussions, will take time to develop and implement. Kern Tax is confident that the end game is the same. Build the best Bakersfield we can over the next 10 to 20 years. The Kern Tax Board is interested in being an active, positive participant as city officials, city council, and the community come together toward that goal." End quote. And the city manager responded, "Thank you very much. We are on line with those concepts." So we, that is the commitment. Last Friday, the city issued new ballot language for councilmembers to consider at tonight's meeting. Among the changes added ballot language, ballot language were four transparent and straightforward words: unrestricted general purposes. Full disclosure is always a good thing. Kern Tax understands that the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act, which will be on the November state ballot, will require this language. Through Kern Tax's numerous meetings with city staff, our support of the tax is based on the city's statements and promises to Kern Tax that it will not function in an unrestricted manner. We believe the city will adopt appropriate taxpayer oversight to adequately address the issues identified by the city in the ballot proposal and the growing needs of the City of Bakersfield." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speaker cards?
I've received three additional speaker cards. The first one from Nick Ortiz.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think Chris Parlier is great, but I love all of the council members equally. Good evening. I'm Nick Ortiz, representing the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, and appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight. We've been engaged in discussions with the city on their fiscal outlook for nearly nine months now, and I'd really like to commend your council, Mr. Tandy, Ms. Gennaro, and their staffs for their outreach efforts, their availability, their willingness to hear concepts, run down facts, provide feedback. I think they've set a very high bar and level of responsiveness for future community issues. So be warned, you may be expected to put the same level of effort in future policy discussions. The chamber has not, in recent history, supported a general tax, and it has been a tough decision for us to get to a place where we could support the proposal before you tonight. But our answer tonight is clear. We support the sales tax increase because we know what kind of community we want to live in. I know that many people will say, and I can understand the concern, that this is only about the pension issue. Do we have a pension issue? Yes. As a city, taken aggressive steps to address that pension issue? Yes, they have. Bakersfield is one of the only cities to run a ballot measure that reduce pension obligations and set us on the path towards reform. We're compliant with the state's pension reform, and this is really a simple question of priorities. Do we want our city to drown in red ink, or do we want to invest in Bakersfield? Do we want to live in a city where police response times rise, where potholes fester, where parks and streetscapes go untended? Do we want to shut down fire stations? Do we want to be overrun by homelessness? I would like to believe, as somebody who is fiscally conservative, that we could reject this and we could force the city to sharpen pencils and find a solution. If we thought that that was the right thing and the possible thing, we would demand it. But we urge staff to develop a plan that could be implemented on November 7, the day after the election, that slashes city funding if there is no revenue measure approved. That way, the voters can really have a chance to understand what this question is about. We can't starve our community to teach Sacramento a lesson. Sacramento and the politicians who really control public pension issues don't care if Bakersfield thrives or dies. They've already declared war on us through criminal justice reforms that plague our communities with crime and homelessness. They've declared war on the types of homes we can live in, when we can run our air conditioners, what type of water and when we can use it. They've declared war on our major industries and are trying to strangle them with regulations. So Sacramento doesn't care if we starve. And I believe it's time for us to invest in Bakersfield. So one of the things that we've discussed with city staff is that we support this, we're willing to be a signatory to the ballot argument, but we do not believe that revenue alone can be the only answer for voters. The city really has to prove that we've really cut all costs, and we've had discussions with staff about how to do that. We're committed to robust oversight through the mechanisms that have been outlined in the proposal. And again, appreciate the opportunity to comment, appreciate the work of the council and staff, and urge you to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Sprague.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Go and City Council Members. My name is Derek Sprague, and I'm president of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors. Today, the Board of Directors of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors voted to endorse and support the local one-cent sales tax, public safety, and vital service city measure. Realtors not only make the dream of homeownership a reality, they also help build better communities. This measure will give the city the tools it desperately needs to provide the services and support at the level of one of California's largest cities. I want to thank Mayor Go and the city council members and their staff for their professionalism and transparency of preparing and presenting this measure and allowing for the public input that we've seen. I especially want to thank city manager Alan Tandy for his time to solicit feedback from groups throughout the city, and I urge the city council to move forward placing this measure on the ballot and hope to see it succeed come November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Next speaker, please.
Louis Gill.
Welcome, Mr. Gill.
Good evening, Mayor. Louis Gill with the Bakersfield Homeless Center. Are we supposed to give our address? I can never remember.
You don't need to.
Okay.
We know where to find you.
You guys know where to find me? All right. I want to speak out in support of this measure. Metro Bakersfield saw the largest increase of homelessness in our county, over a 40% increase. Demand is outstripping the available resources. City has not been able to reallocate and invest sufficient resources to move the needle on the number of individuals that need help. This is an opportunity to do something about that. I am grateful for the presentations that city staff have done. They've even come out, talked to us, the leaders of the nonprofits, just to say, hey, this is how we can be involved with you to address this issue. This is not going to get better without all of us working together, and so I urge you to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Marvin Dean.
Good evening. Marvin Dean again. I'm here in favor of supporting the public to have a right to vote on this issue. I haven't taken a position whether I'm going to support personally, support the measure, or advocate to my community whether to support the measure, but I believe the public should weigh in on this. And I want to say a couple of things before I finish up here. First of all, I want to say that the city manager and this council has been very prudent over the years in terms of how we spend our funds. So I commend you all and city staff in terms of how we've done it, but we do have a crisis. I was listening at the various debates, back and forth, those are for it, those are against it, and I support Councilman Weir's position that... Because one of the big issues is this pension, is most of the money's going to be actually going to these pension funds to shore that up. And if it is, it needs to be clearly defined to the public so the public knows what they're voting for. So I think that need to be taken in. I commend you for your position on that. I don't think it was against the public voting, but it's the public voting with full disclosure. And I would just say I have to commend the public having a right to weigh in, and if these funds are going to be raised and spent on the list that you outline here, some of those are very worthy things, the money ought to go to. And then I would just say in closing, the appointment of the advisory committee. These ought to be independent folks. I think the appointment ought to be by the council itself, and it should be diverse. And it should not be yes folks. It should be people that are independent, that can look at these projects and how the money is being spent, so they're not just going along because somebody's going to put them in that position to go along. They ought to be truly independent folks, and they ought to be very diverse folks, so that we do have a close, watchful eye on how these funds are going to be spent for our community. So again, I commend you all for taking the step to move this thing forward and let the public weigh in on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else? We have about a minute left. Is there anyone in the audience who did not speak, submit a speaker card who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, we will now go with rebuttal in that we just had a clarifying question during the opposition. Would it be appropriate still to go to rebuttal, Madam City Attorney?
Mayor, only if that one gentleman had any further comments.
Mr. Collins, do you have anything further in opposition?
I'm just going.
Okay. So we'll now go to council for a comment, and... Oh, we need a timeout. So let's take a seven-minute break and...
Seven?
Seven... Six point two. You're asking for a timeout, right? Okay.
Actually, famous councilman, Chris Parlier.
Oh, okay. We'll have a health break right now. Right, we'll now go to council for a comment and action. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the speakers in that it is time for a decision for the voters of Bakersfield. I've been on the council for six years now, and from the very beginning, there was a lot of conversation about we need more public safety, we need more police on the street. And for the first year or so, we tried to add some more policemen, and then another recession hit, and sales tax continued to go down, and we have not been able to provide the services to the community that we wanted to, or that the community obviously desires. Things will not get better unless we do something. So it's up to the voters what direction we should take. So I think that it's time to give them that opportunity. So I will make the motion per staff's recommendation, and I will volunteer to co-write the argument for with the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, and if any other council members want to participate in the for or against, then we can add that to the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, appreciate the comments that were made tonight, and it really is powerful when groups that are here tonight speak in favor of raising taxes. You know, we are a very conservative community, certainly, for the most part, a conservative council. We don't like new taxes. We don't like taxes, period, but certainly far be it to, you know, be in favor of raising taxes. And when the Kern Taxpayer Association and, of course, the Chamber of Commerce, the Association of Realtors, and the nonprofits, when they recognize, I mean, we are forced to recognize, they are forced to recognize that it's, you know, we're in a corner, we're in a bind, this is something necessary. I've been on the council for six years, but I've been on the council for 23 years, and we have tightened our belt, we have just been determined to keep our... No new hiring, that's been our policy for a long time, and we have stuck to that. We have done, we are lean and mean as a city. Our bound, our boundaries have almost doubled since I have been on the council, and we just keep going. We have really pushed the limit, real, seen what we can do with the same, with the same amount, and I've been very, we've all been very proud of our staff. The city, everybody, everybody's, has realized just how hard we can work, and really, the public hasn't noticed that much of a difference because we just, we do work very hard to keep up our city standard. Of course, CalPERS is majorly flawed, majorly flawed, and that is, that's a very serious problem. So we, you know, and just who you elect to office is important. People are going up to Sacramento, and we, this is California, you know, this is a California issue. So we've just got, we've got a lot of work to do. Certainly, our pensions, we have a certain amount of control here locally, but we will continue to be very, just very responsible and dedicated to every dollar that we do have. And of course, tonight, it's a matter of just giving the taxpayers the opportunity for, or voting for this issue to go to the ballot, and then in November it will be decided. But the staff has worked very hard on this. We have put this off as long as it's possible, and so we'll see what happens in November. But for these groups to recognize and speak in favor, encouraging us to put it on the ballot, we don't, that's the thing to do, to put it on the ballot and let it be decided in November. So I'm glad we have, we know as a matter of record how well we've done with our dollars and how just hardline we have been. So we need a lot more work to do, really, as far as our pensions and, you know, our benefits are concerned, and we have some ideas on that. But anyway, thanks for being here, and so it's time soon, it's time for the vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. I've had an opportunity over the past couple of months to visit with various different community groups and speak with various stakeholders on this matter. And throughout my conversations, there have been three basic questions that continue to come up, and so I wanted to take an opportunity in front of the council and the general public to ask the city manager a few questions, if I may. Mr. Tandy, if we look at the new revenue we're expecting, it's estimated to be around $50 million. We've heard tonight from certain individuals who made public comments about spending priorities, and I wondered if you could, for us, outline what might the spending parties look like?
Councilmember Gonzalez, certainly. The resolution that was attached to the documents you adopted tonight has a more detailed rendition or version of the spending priorities, and the top three or four orient around homelessness, particularly public safety, specific public safety-related items such as crimes against property, automobile theft, gang and youth violence. And then homelessness is on that list. Economic development is on that list because that's a way to grow the tax pie. That's a net gain for all if we can reestablish the staff necessary to put together programs such as led to the Padre Hotel and the Maya Cinemas and the Mill Creek and the Seven Housing Projects and the Federal Courthouse along Mill Creek. We would, we'd very much, redevelopment was taken from us by the state, but we'd very much like to get back actively in that game. And then a small proportion, smaller proportion of the money for the potential of community amenities, such as enhancing our regional parks, which are actually economic development engines in and of themselves because they bring people here and fill our hotels and occupy our restaurants. But public safety, by and far, the most significant item, preserving our Class II rating as a fire department, certainly is significant and will require additional staffing as well.
Great, thank you. Second question relates to CalPERS, and that is a concern that continues to come up throughout various different corners of the community. What percentage of the new money, the new revenue, if the sales tax is passed by the voters, do you see going to CalPERS and our pension obligation?
Councilmember Gonzalez, give me some license here to answer your question. It may be kind of lengthy. First, I think in discussing this issue, it needs to be pointed out that the city did place on the ballot some years ago a lowering in the pension levels, and then after that, there was a state-initiated lowering in the pension levels. So we are talking about, everybody hired since those dates is under a lower benefit level than the old pension benefits, which is the retroactive part of our obligation to PERS. Additionally, I agree with all of those who say CalPERS needs to be reformed. It does desperately, and it's out of control. And my personal view of it is that the composition of the board is flawed and that it does not weigh heavily enough for those who are members, units such as us. Instead, it tends to result in individual being elected to serve on the board whose interests are only in the preservation of benefits. But we can't do that. More specifically, to answer your question, currently 19% of the general fund is dedicated to CalPERS. However, that is a general fund that has virtually no capital in it. If this tax passes, the public safety obligations will include a $17 million public safety radio system. As discussed, it will include new police vehicles, new police equipment, probably new fire equipment, and it will also result in the construction of more affordable housing. All of those things contain no PERS at all, so the mix of operating costs and capital costs will weigh much more heavily on the capital side of the revised composite budget. So my guess, my best guess is, in the early years, 13% to 14%, and over time, as the capital got caught up and the operating costs continue to grow and the capital costs shrunk because those needs were met, that would go up, but that would be in the first several years in my professional judgment.
Okay, thank you. My third question to underscore the point. With the new revenue, should the voters pass this measure, would we have enough money to address both the CalPERS payments and the enhancements to public services, public safety services?
Councilmember Gonzalez, I've appeared, repeated forums with Chief Martin and have agreed and concurred with him in that we need, in the vicinity of another hundred sworn police officers, which necessitates a complementary staff, about 60% in civilians, to support those officers. We need the restoration of some of our lost fire staffing and several million dollars for economic development, cultural, and homelessness efforts each. And the answer to your question is yes. We will be able to pay our CalPERS obligations and do all of that.
Thank you. Well, out of all the data presented throughout the past several months, there are four points that are most important to me when I consider this vote tonight. Number one, crime is up. From 2003 to 2017, auto thefts are up by 62% in the city of Bakersfield. Burglaries are up by 31%, homicides by 75%, robberies by 66%, sexual assault and rape up 42%. In fact, if you compare Bakersfield with the top 20 cities in California excluding San Francisco and LA, we have a far higher vehicle theft rate and property crime rate per capita. The average in those 20 cities is 537, 573, excuse me, vehicle thefts, and yet we are at 854. Property crime per 100,000 individuals, on average, over the top 20 cities, is 2,978. In Bakersfield, it's 4,524. Number two, at the same time, homelessness has become a very clear issue, and it is one that I hear about from my constituents every single day. The Kern County Homeless Collaborative, as we heard from Louis Gill, has estimated, with their appointed time count this year, an increase in homelessness by 46% in metro Bakersfield. Number three, police staffing. When we compare ourselves to the same group of those top 20 cities, we find that we are below average when it comes to police staffing. The police staffing average among the top 20 cities is 742, yet in Bakersfield, our staffing is at 530. The sworn staff average among those top 20 cities is 519, yet in Bakersfield, staffing is at 407. But even still, I'm mindful of our local economy and the impact a sales tax increase might have on the families in our community. So I look at data point number four and ask the question, where would a one-cent increase put us in comparison to other Central Valley cities? The answer is that it puts us right in line with other Central Valley communities: Sacramento, Tulare, Arvin, Wasco, Delano, Ridgecrest, Merced, Corcoran, Madera, Los Banos, Manteca, Tracy, Porterville, all have an 8 and 1/4% sales tax. Visalia and Danuba have an 8 and 1/2% sales tax, and Stockton has a 9%. As an elected leader, this action is not an easy one to take, but as a community member and someone who hopes to live in Bakersfield for 90 years... But as a community member and someone who hopes to live in Bakersfield for another 40 to 50 years, God willing, I think it is important for us to make this investment now and continue working for safer neighborhoods, a stronger economy, an improved quality of life, and ultimately a better Bakersfield. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to capitalize on the statements made by Councilmember Gonzalez really quick. And Chief, you might be able to help me on this, Chief Martin? First of all, I just want to say in regards to auto theft, and it's a record that, you know, we definitely don't want. We're number three in the nation as far as auto thefts. And again, we do not want that moniker. Chief, would you be able to answer real quick? And I know that we've talked about this before, but I think it bears repeating. Where your department stands now, how it'll look like if we continue on the path that we're currently on, and the things that you might be able to do if the measure passes, and generally the effects of 109, AB 109, and Prop 5747 on our community.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Parlier, I think Nick hit on it pretty well. I'll start with the propositions because the public recognizes that Prop 57, Prop 47, and Prop, and AB 109 adversely affects the local effects in regards to crime. I mean, it did exactly what the state wanted it to do. They wanted to reduce their population. But the reality is, is now that the Kern County Jail is housing a different type of criminal. They are looking at violent criminals and they are having to triage every day. And the people who are getting out are those folks who are going out and committing home burglaries, vehicle burglaries and those types of things. And that revolving door has, it's kind of taken its way. However, there are some things that are happening to try to remedy some of those effects at the state level through Cal Chiefs and Cal sheriffs.
Chief, if you don't mind, can I interject really quick? Due to our geographic location in regards to surrounding prisons, do you think we're inordinately impacted because of the proximity of all the state prisons?
Oh, absolutely. We have 13 basically comprehensive prisons. And if somebody's going to prison for an extended amount of time, it is not uncommon for their family to move closer to that prison to make it easier for them for visitation and those types of things. So their families do end up coming to our area. So we are impacted by that. Also, when they're released from prison, they're given a bag and $200 and put on a Greyhound bus and dropped off right here at 18th Street and they're right here in the middle of our city. So that does play an impact as well. I think there's a couple of things that have been touched on here. And I think philosophically, we as a community, Councilmember Sullivan talked about it, we are fiscally conservative. I'm very fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible. That's what you pay me to do. But the reality is, we still, as a police department and as city government, we realize that we are a big city, ninth largest in the state, 57th largest in the country. But we have people here who still see us as a small town. We have big city issues and we have to address them. So without the measure, the 538 folks across the street at the Bakersfield Police Department will work tirelessly. I've never been a whiner, I'll never be a whiner. I'll come to work, I'll work 26 hours a day if you need me to because I believe in this community. And the people who work for me believe in this community. But we do need the resources to do what we need to do. So if it passes, what we'll be able to do, we'll be able to reduce those response times. We'll be able to handle gang issues proactively and reactively. Proactively is school resource officers, POW, the things that, you know, are near and dear to my heart, Community Relations Unit, those types of things. Reactively, I think the community has seen in my 18-month tenure how I deal with gang issues and I will leverage every local, state and federal agency that I can to do the things that you pay me to do. I'm very resourceful and I'm very good at motivating other agencies to come on board. But there's only so many dollars and so many hours that I can lean on other agencies. Proactive patrols, I hear this all the time, I never see a police officer, I never see a police car, it's just zooming back and forth. That's because we are responding to those Priority One calls. So the proactive patrol, I hear it from the officers, they ask them, what's the number one thing that you would like? I'd like to be able to slowly drive through a neighborhood where I'm not going to a Priority One call and actually address crime before it happens. That's what police officers want to do. They want to actually get out and say hello to a kid who's playing basketball in front of the house versus just going back and forth to Priority One calls. This will give us the opportunity to do that. And also expand our partnerships with nongovernmental agencies. I think we do a great job of that. Last month in the Bakersfield Magazine that's in the Californian, you'll see there are partnerships. There's over 200 agencies that your police department has partnered with, nongovernmental agencies, schools, those types of things, to leverage the dollars that we are allocated. And that's my dedication to this community. I'm going to find a way to get the things done that we need to get done. But there are some things that philosophically, we as a community have to look at and say, hey, maybe we need to take a step back and think about how we do business.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your dedication to this community. Chief Hartley?
Again, Chief, we chatted about this too, but I think it bears repeating. Real quick, same questions that I have. Chief Martin, could you just expand upon that a little bit?
Yes, sir. Mayor Go, councilmembers, Councilmember Parlier, on behalf of the Fire Department, I do want to say that our focus is always on providing the best quality service that we can for the citizens of Bakersfield. Accomplishing our mission is extremely important to us. As this great city grows, it is our desire to responsibly grow with this city. As mentioned earlier in a presentation, our call volume jumped last year 12%. If we look at a 10-year trend line, we have gone from 27,000 calls per year now to over 41,000 calls per year. We are an extremely busy fire department and we take pride in doing the best job that we possibly can. One thing that concerns us and one nationally recognized rating is our ISO Class II rating. It is important to us and it's important to the citizens of Bakersfield that we maintain that ISO Class II rating. If we were to receive funding, that would be a focus. We would make sure that we analyze response times, we analyze staffing, and we make sure that we are meeting or exceeding the expectations of the citizens of Bakersfield. The restoration of staffing would be helpful as we move into the future, as Mr. Tandy said. It would be important to us to restore some of the staffing components that we lost, both operationally and in support, in an effort to maintain that ISO Class II rating. If we were unsuccessful in receiving funding, as Chief Martin said, we would do our absolute best to fulfill our mission and to continue to serve the citizens of Bakersfield to the best of our ability. We are extremely fiscally responsible. We understand the importance of running our business effectively and we take a lot of pride in that, too.
Chief, I'm glad you brought up the rating. Does that affect insurance rates for any businesses that may be in town?
Yes, sir, it does. The ISO Class rating has an effect on the insurance cost to commercial occupancies throughout the city of Bakersfield.
And if we were to lose that rating, the correlation would be that their insurance rates could go up, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I represent two big economic drivers for the city of Bakersfield. One is Valley Plaza, the other is Auto Mall, and hopefully soon to be the Bass Pro Shops. What I hear from my constituents is public safety and crime is the number one issue. In fact, Mickey's House, he called me one morning in regards to a car that drove through his fence and narrowly missed his residence. This was a drug crazed criminal. And after he ripped down Mickey's fence, he took off and the police are still looking for him. Also homelessness, homelessness continues to be a problem. When I came on the city council just four years ago, there really wasn't a homeless issue in Ward 7. And now I deal with it almost on a daily basis. Now, if tonight's vote was to, for the city council to impose a tax on citizens of Bakersfield, I wouldn't be for it. That's what Sacramento does to us. They impose stuff, impose their will on municipalities. But I'm for democracy and I'm for self-determination and I'm for the people to make this decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Earlier, in response to Councilmember Gonzalez's question, Mr. Tandy said, well, the PERS cost might be 13%. It may grow in the future. The percentage is going to decrease if our economic base grows. If our tax base grows, that means if we attract jobs and grow our community, the percentage is going to go down and down. If we deteriorate and our tax base doesn't grow and businesses don't grow here and come here and thrive here, that percentage is going to go up and up and up and up. We're not thriving. We're modestly deteriorating in our community right now. But we, this really is a crossroads. And I think we have to let the people make a decision on which direction they want to go. And so I agree with Councilmember Parlier, this is democracy, we let the people choose what type of community they want. And so I'm in support of the resolution to allow the people to vote on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we've received a lot of good information, a lot of comments from folks. I appreciate that. The people came here to support this motion or to support the sales tax measure, or we're very well informed. They've had presentations, they've asked questions, they've had communications, very, very well informed. What will our voters receive? I don't think we have time to go out and do Bakersfield College Stadium presentations. Not sure how many people show up anyway. So basically, what our voters are going to see is the ballot language. They might read the arguments in favor, they might read the arguments opposed. But basically, it's going to be the ballot measure. So what is it that we want our voter to understand? I think we need our voters to understand exactly what they're voting for. That's how you make a good informed decision. That's how the people here supported this tonight. They're making a good informed decision. What I think is going to happen is there are a lot of Mr. Collins in our voting group. And when they go see this, it's going to look like Disneyland. Police, fire, protection, any gang, drug units, neighborhood police patrols, rapid assaults, response to adults, homelessness, retrain, job and business. Would you pay a penny for that? Well, yeah. Who wouldn't? It's a good deal. But that's not what we're doing. What we're doing is increasing the rate of our sales tax from seven and a quarter to eight and a quarter. It's a 13.8% increase in that tax. Voters should know that. We've had some comments tonight about is pension a problem? And yes, it is. And there's been mention about the city passing a measure to reduce our pensions. And I don't mind saying that Zach Scribner and I are the ones that worked on that. It was a good measure. We got it passed. I ran unopposed that year and I worked on that measure extensively. Right now, our pension is scheduled to increase approximately $30 million incrementally, $30 million over the next seven years. It's going from $42 million to $71 million. And $71 million every year and more because they will increase that rate once it gets there. CalPERS, it's a black hole, an insatiable desire for money. It's not going to stop. But I will say tonight, my concerns were at least addressed a little bit because we did talk about how much of this new revenue is going to be consumed by pension. That's a good step. Why isn't it in the ballot language? I don't think it would be very popular in there. So I've made my comments clear before and I don't really think I need to speak about them anymore. This measure is a good Band-Aid. It does not solve our problems. And as CalPERS demands more and more, it's going to shrink the funds that are available from this measure. So if we think we're going to have all this for police and fire protection and all, it's just not true. Voters should know that. So I'm not going to support this motion, but I do want to ask the mayor if I can make a motion after the vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. So really, I waited until the end so I could benefit from everyone's comments. And really, by and large, I agree with, I think, every single statement most everyone to my left has made. You know, I have voted in several elections now in California. And if you could sit and tell me that you think that ballot questions posed, you know, before and to the voters of California on all of the issues we're asked to vote on every year are straightforward and clear, then I'd give you 100 bucks because they're not. And I had to spend good time back in, earlier this month, looking at the measures before us because they were not clear. And I had no idea from the language what on earth I was supporting. This, if you take the time to read it, is much, much clearer to me. I think really, and you have to, you have to at some point put stock in what your city council, what your city of Bakersfield staff are saying, what the folks who will hold our feet to the fire are committing to and saying. And that is that we're going to prioritize the things that I think are very much needed in Bakersfield, and that's to bolster law enforcement, that's to support and enhance economic development and businesses here. Because all of those things aren't in my mind Band-Aids. They're actual investments we make as a city to help sustain our future and put us in, put us on a better path towards sustainability in decades to come. So I think the, there's a lot of potential should this be successful in November. Certainly, I think I've felt from the very beginning that this is an issue for the voters and that's what needs to happen tonight. And, you know, what happens in November will happen and we will then adjust accordingly. But I think it's quite premature to say that, absent the approval of this at the ballot box, that we have prioritized and figured out what we're going to do with every box, that we have prioritized and figured out what we're going to do with every single cent. Certainly, I think you've heard from everyone up here, and I know that we will hear again after November that there are things this community cares about, and I am committed to ensuring that dollars are invested to represent that. That's my job. I think that's the job of everyone up here, is that our due diligence and our job doesn't end tonight when we send this matter to the voters. Really, the job continues, and if this is a successful measure, then our job continues after November in being good stewards of this money and ensuring that it's represented and spent in a manner befitting of, you know, the needs of the residents of Bakersfield. So with that, I'll support the measure and call the question.
Hey, you have a motion, please?
He already, and he already did the motion.
What do I need to do? We had a motion earlier.
The motion to call the question, Mayor, requires a separate motion, so I don't know if you have any other lights on, but it requires a 2/3s motion to call the question, which means there is no further debate.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could? I was simply trying to get to the original motion we made, so I'm not trying to prevent that from occurring.
Then maybe you want to strike that, and the mayor can just call for the motion.
Go for it.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that I write the opposition argument.
So you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
At this point, I don't see any lights on, so thank you again for being here. And as we started the meeting, I am going to adjourn this in honor of Mary Kay Shell in memory of her, and I will be using her gavel. We stand adjourned at 7:14. Thank you.